Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Complete stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Is that on? Okay. Welcome to the October 5th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners.
This week's featured dog available for adoption from the Lorain County Kennel is a sweet little guy, a very attractive short-haired brindle puggle. He was found wandering on West River Road in Elaria, a male about two to three years old. He just needs a good home. He's available for adoption Saturday, October 8th at 3:00 PM. Why not stop by the kennel and take him for a little walk? Get to meet him!
As you can see, Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams is not here today. His father had passed away on October 4th. His name is Thomas Edward Williams, Sr., and his viewing will be Thursday, October 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00 and 7:00 to 9:00 at Dombrowski Rural Funeral Home. And his services will also be at the October 7th for the funeral services. So if you'd like to attend, I'm sure Commissioner Williams would appreciate seeing you there to support him and his father's untimely death. He is a young 71-years-old.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no payments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as in the Kennel Summary Sheet for Employees Within Jurisdictional Lorain County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I do have a couple personnel issues, specifically a potential new hire in workforce development. Obviously, the revolving door of new hires at Golden Acres. A matter of union negotiations with United Steelworkers. Also, an update on our contract with the operating engineers at the Vaskil Bridge that I wish to discuss with the Board. Those topics are allowable for executive session talks, so that's the conclusion of our regular Board meeting. Today, we go into executive session to talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved way of the reigning and same the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of September 20, 2011?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Enter into merchant agreement with First Merritt Bank to accept credit cards for the parking lot on Depot Street, Elaria, effective two years, with renewal option for successful two years and contains a 90-day clause. County will charge $3 per day in this parking lot unless other arrangements have been made when renting the Transportation Community Center and authorized County Administrator execute behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordes, can you expand on this?
This is the new parking lot that we installed across from the Transportation and Community Center.
On the site of the old one-stop for the License Bureau?
Yes. Okay. You said "one-stop," I'm thinking workforce development.
The one-stop...
Well, we used to have the title office.
Correct.
The old bowling alley.
Okay.
Right now, we have automated equipment there that takes credit cards, but we don't have an agreement. There were some nuances in the agreement that we had to work through because we're a governmental entity and our ability to allow certain terms and conditions in the contract. So Mr. Ennis was good enough to be working on that. And it's been sitting for a little while, but we do hope to charge for parking in that lot. And as the resolution says, other than if we've negotiated for a function that's going to happen at the facility, so we need that flexibility. I don't think this is going to generate a great deal of revenue, but we need to have it in place for the potentiality.
And how is this policed? How are we going to collect?
Well, it's gated.
Is there an arm?
There's an arm.
Okay.
I hope it's not like the Broad Street arm because we have like a...I buy them by the gross because it seems like every week somebody decides to break the arm off. But that one's not automated, excuse me, it doesn't have a credit card automation on Broad Street. This one, we established with state-of-the-art equipment so that they can do swipe when they use the parking facility. So if there's a big function, we can decide what we want to do up there. But as a general rule, I would probably say we're not going to see too much use outside of event parking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Receive and journalize proposed vacation of Russell Street, 30 feet wide, northerly right-of-way line of Elaria Avenue extending northerly to about 15.2 feet southerly from easterly extension southerly right-of-way of Gray Street, being part of original lot 108 in Gaylord subdivision, as recorded in Volume 5, Page 18, Sheffield Township. Publication will be in the Journal October 7th and 14th, viewing will be October 21st at 9:00 AM, and hearing will be on November 2nd at 9:45.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Receive and journalize proposed vacation of South Hattaway Street, unimproved, containing .1556 acres, in original lot 8, Carlisle Homes, allotment, as recorded in Volume 13, Page 6, Carlisle Township. Publication will be in Chronicle on October 7th and 14th, viewing will be October 21st at 10, and hearing will be November 2nd at 10.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, terminate the designation, host community agreement.
So moved.
Second? Jerry, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, this is just the conclusion of our dealings with EPA as a result of our negotiations with them. We have to terminate our current designation and host a community agreement with Republic. Republic is on board with us on that, and hopefully we can reinstitute everything and get a new agreement put together through the Planning Committee, and maybe Keith can fill you in a little bit more about that.
Keith Bailey, Solid Waste. This is going to be a step process, all right? So first, we're going to terminate the existing agreement, then we're going to get our new draft plan out there, which has the fix in it to suit the EPA for public comment and through the ratification process. And once that ratification process is over with, then we will go back and tie up and sign a new community, host community agreement with Republic, all right? But it cannot take effect until the plans, new plans are placed, all right?
Why don't you briefly describe the ratification process for those that have not heard this before?
We have to, first of all, take the plan out for a 30-day written comment period, which will very shortly happen, within probably the next seven days. And then there will be a public hearing in November, all right, which is usually the Policy Committee meeting. At that point in time, then, the Policy Committee will determine whether they want to make any changes to plan based on the comments and based on the public hearing. At that point, the Committee will vote the plan out for ratification. At that point in time, it must receive 60% approval by population of the political subdivisions in the district. It's a little bit complicated. It's not a majority vote here. It's 60% of the population represented by the political subdivisions. So all 34 political subdivisions, including you, the Commissioners, will have a chance to vote on it. And once that ratification is complete, we have, there's a 90-day window legally that we can do that in. Once that's declared and set, at the end of that 90 days, we bring it back, the Policy Committee reviews the results of ratification, and if we have the 60%, it goes to EPA for final approval.
Now, my understanding is it requires 60%, but it also requires, A, the county and B, the larger city within the community. So even if we achieve the 60%, but we're not able to achieve the county and the city of Lorain currently...
That is correct.
We will be unsuccessful in that ratification process.
That's correct.
So we're going to be working on that, but it's not as given as one would hope. The last ratification process was a little stormy.
Yeah, extended an additional year to get it done. It was very difficult last time.
Now, we have new mayors to give up the speed on these.
The new mayors will not be in office when we do this ratification process.
It's going to be done before January?
That is the hope.
Wow.
We have to be all done by June and submitted, correct?
That's correct.
And we'll still have the EPA issues to work through.
So you're hoping to be ratified by year-end, right?
Well, we're going to...it's going to be in the new year, Jim.
Oh, I actually thought it was going to be by year. So maybe the new mayors will be in place. I apologize.
They will be. They will be. And the ratification process, since the EPA is still holding us abey as of yesterday yet on sending this out for public comment, and the calendar point where the timelines in the state law take us in the new year.
We need to talk about that EPA issue offline later.
Yes, sir.
Because I did read your email, and I understood that we had passed that very, but maybe we haven't. Okay. Thanks.
Just curious, isn't the city of Lorain is the largest city?
Correct.
And I was just concerned that they...are they not under contract with Allied at this point? Because I know every quarter, when I get my bill from Allied, it goes up, you know, just a little bit, but I don't understand the increase.
I believe they've been on an extension. This year, they extended the prior contract through this year with Allied/Republic, whatever the contracting agency is.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the contents of that contract.
That's a locally negotiated...
Especially if you need to call the mayor and find out why. I mean, it's been just every month, every three, because we get it every three months, but every single time it goes up just a little bit at a time, up, up, up. And I thought we were under contract. Why wouldn't it be the same?
Well, they might have increases built into the contract.
More than likely, you're putting a fuel surcharge. That varies.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award contract to RET-3 Job Corp Cleveland for the e-scrap collection recycling program for 2012. Court proposal received, this being the most responsive complying investigation since September 8th. The cost is eight cents per pound and provides 1,000 shipping boxes and pallets at no cost and new changes below district cost by over, and this should be 16,000. I was trying to...
150 cents.
I know. I don't know where I got that number at. And save value of materials handled in 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
We received four qualified proposals for this, and it's my pride that we actually have reduction in costs again. I told you, this electronics market had changed, and now things have value. But the big dragger on the electronics market's always been the CRT monitors. They have no value. They're a cost to us, and their cost usually outweighs what the profit in the electronics is. So we keep moving forward, and this is the first time we've been able to get a cut in price on this particular product, all right?
Thank you, Keith.
Thanks.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, can I ask you?
I don't have any additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report this morning either.
I'll ask your support. Well, Saturday, the Doggie Do in Oberlin, which I enjoy going to every year to be a judge, got canceled due to the weather. It was rainy and nasty. Normally, it's rain or shine, but it was just a little bit too bad for...we figured the tents and everything would probably blow away. Goodwill's job fair is today. It started at 9:00, and it will be going until 3:00 o'clock. And like I said, they had 19 or 21 employers signed up last week, hopefully even more by today. So there's some job opportunities out there for some people. And their grand opening for their official grand opening for their store in Oberlin will be Thursday, the 13th, and that's at 10:00 o'clock. They had a soft opening on Monday, and they did extremely, extremely well. So go out there and see what they have to offer and find the treasure. Like, I always find a treasure when I go to Goodwill. So that's the end of my report.
Okay. I'd like to thank the Morning Journal Chronicle, Telegram. The Board of Commissioners met with their editorial boards last Wednesday and Thursday. Thank you for the ringing endorsements of Issue 22. Was a busy week. Myself, Sheriff Stomidi, Dennis Kavanaugh, and Prosecutor Will. We're at the Midview Ladies Club this past week, talking about the sales tax. Again, real good response. Spoke to people. We are Ohio Event last night in Avon Lake. The billboards are up around the county. We've got 10 billboards up, yes, on Issue 22 for the criminal justice system, quarter percent temporary tax. We are having a fundraiser, October 16th. The Journal had it online this morning. It is at Stocker Center. It will be from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. I'm sorry, Brad, I didn't check yours online and have time this morning.
It wasn't on there. I looked at mine.
2:00 to 4:00. It'll be $15. There's a cash bar. It's the Terry Kitchen Swing City Big Band, featuring Ray Ubers on vocals. It's very popular. We have 2,000 tickets out there with only 1,000 seats, so first come, first served. There are also sponsorships of $200 for the event. We were asking elected officials and businesses to help participate in that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Kokoski, Fiscal Officer Pat Echo from Sheffield Township, and Treasurer Dan Teller for being our first sponsors. Also, if you're on Facebook, Issue 22, Keep Our County Safe. We have a Facebook page. It's up and running. Please like us, join us. All the information will be there. And just a busy week coming up. So that's the end of my report. And next week, our meeting will be on Tuesday. The Board is moving our meeting because I have to be in Columbus on Wednesday for meetings with Mark Kwame with Jobs Ohio. So that's the end of my report.
Before we go on to, I just want to congratulate the Ohio Semley Plant for the $128 million investment that Ford is going to be bringing to the Ford plant, which is such good news for our community. And it goes to show that the workers at that plant have done a tremendous job, and otherwise Ford wouldn't be investing. So congratulations to Ohio Semley Plant and all the people there.
The meeting on Tuesday will be at noon, so not at 9:30, at noon. And then we will not meet on Wednesday. Board correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning? Come on up, Elizabeth.
Speaking of Oberlin, our Oberlin representative?
Elizabeth Rummix Oberlin, you're quite right about the canceling of the Doggie Do. Tappan Square was probably ankle-deep in mud at that point, and so on. I really have just two questions. The next Tuesday meeting at noon, is that a regular Commissioners' meeting?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
We have meetings prior to that in the morning we have to attend, so we made it at noon. Just we had scheduling issues, and everything going on the Board was kind enough to move the meeting so I can meet with Mark Kwame.
I think we did that about six weeks ago.
Yeah, it's been a while. I've had it on my calendar a while.
And my other question is the Wellington meeting on the 19th. Where is it to be held?
The Wellington meeting.
What's meaning? Is there not a meeting of the Commissioners and other officials on October 19th about the sales tax?
I believe that's New Russia Township.
Oh.
We have New Russia Township in Sheffield Township. You got your calendar up, Tony?
Yeah.
My phone's gone down.
New Russia Township on the 19th from 7:00 to 9:00, and then there's something in La Grange Township Association on Thursday, the 20th? That's all I have. I don't have anything for Wellington.
Sheffield Township on the 26th, I believe. We'll get you that schedule. Maybe we ought to post that, give that to Hal to post on our...the events we're speaking at and where we're going to have public meetings, because we're still trying to schedule other communities, so.
Thank you. For some reason, I had heard it as being in Wellington.
No, we just did Penfield, which included a lot of Wellington people.
Which is Wellington, right.
So we're in New Russia, Sheffield Township.
Well, New Russia, of course, is going to be most convenient. Thank you.
And all that information is on the website now, if you guys haven't looked at it.
Okay, it is on our website now.
With the click button, the one-click button, and you're all there. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the Board this morning? Make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county prosecutor and county administrator?
Second?
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Hey buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before, we had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers, and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails, and jumping on you. It's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you, and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people, she likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air, and just look up at you with this sad look. So it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I'm always like, "Oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, like sometimes, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in, and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from... I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed, told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, because I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards.
One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs, and take them for walks, and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble, because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know? Because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet. And so I called, and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem. You know, even though he's a small dog, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, "Hey mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license, and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog, and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children are educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this. To help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4. Part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the street safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children. When you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know? Does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say, "Left, right, left, behind you, in front of you," once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us. And we even had one child that came up to us and said, "You know what, Ms. Stanisky? We were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, 'Look left, look right, look left.'" So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children, and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, "Ooh." And we get up there, and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions. You know, we'll say, "Well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast, and I'm fast, and we can run." And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and, "No, we shouldn't do this." So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing. That you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them, it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways. And they should never run across the railroad tracks. They should walk, and continue to look both ways. Because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone. It could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade. Some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them, "That train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there." But we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh no, those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first.
And don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat.
Who's right Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely. Like, don't run out into the street without looking.
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, I smell... What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So, what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming!
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children, and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection, with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars. He goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said, when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection. What happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, "Look left, look right, look left again," and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, "Matthew, remember Asimo?" And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them. Now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules, and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore. We can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
In 2009, Mr. Carney felt that if we expanded the program and went into the technological era, that we could cover more schools and help more students. We felt that 2nd, 3rd, and 4th graders would get much more out of it and enjoy it if it was on a computer. We use one disc that's called Walk Smart for 2nd and 3rd graders. It teaches the children where to walk, it teaches them things that they should know about traffic signals, and the third part of it is watching for cars. The 4th grade disc is called Safer Journey. That is in a three-part section with a fourth part that's added called Library, so that if they want to go back in as 4th graders and actually look up anything that they just viewed, it will give them a description. Each one allows the student to interact on the computer individually.
While you move the mouse back and forth. Try it.
We thought the student will look at it, because they love to work on computers, so that they would look at it as fun and a game. And each student can work at their own level, or at their own pace. Our response has been amazing.
They enjoy being on the computer. So I think just by clicking, and being able to listen and observe those things, it's more interactive with them. This program is teaching the skills of being more observant as they're crossing the street, and being more aware of what's going on around them.
It makes me work harder. We have to guess if the cars can come from which way. Gets my brain on learning.
It helps me learn how to cross streets and how to watch for cars.
Do you have to look both ways when you go across the street and everything? Because I like, because it would actually teach me something.
You know, sometimes we just think that students know exactly where they should be walking. There's a sidewalk, and we know that they should cross at the light and look both ways.
It tells you what to do and what not to do in the street.
This just reinforces, because sometimes the students don't know all of those things. They haven't always been taught. They are much better off for being part of the program.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Small towns. Urban fringe and suburban developments. Rural communities across the country. A small mining village in the Northwest. Coastal residential areas. Across America, communities have learned that sewers and central wastewater treatment plants are not the only way to have a comfortable standard of living. A well-organized Community On-Site Wastewater Management System, or OMS, can ensure public health, enhance water quality, protect property values, sustain the environment, and accommodate growth for the long term. Examples abound nationwide. Some communities have implemented an on-site wastewater management system from the beginning. Others have developed an OMS to address specific concerns or to correct failing conditions. All are successfully using wastewater treatment systems located in or near their own yards. But are on-site systems a modern way to treat wastewater? Are they really that dependable? Historically, seepage pits and septic systems were constructed without much sighting or design guidance, and received little maintenance. Failures were common. During the post-war housing boom in the late 1940s and early 1950s, millions of septic systems were installed. Despite improved septic tank designs, there were still widespread failures.
Of course, the reasons that they failed early on was that we never recognized differences in soil and soil acceptance rates. Well, as a result of these continuing failures, it was reason that these systems are unreliable.
Treatment begins in the septic tank. Solids and floating matter separate from the wastewater. The wastewater is then dispersed to the soil where most treatment occurs. New knowledge about soil has led to success with septic systems.
The idea is that the soil contains numerous bacteria, and that the bacteria then aid in purifying the liquid as it passes by.
With the air found in loose soil to breathe, and with the food in the wastewater to eat, the organisms multiply and go to work. The water clears in as little as two feet of good soil. But good soil is not found everywhere. Only about one-third of the United States has soil suitable for conventional systems. However, there are methods that make up foresight limitations. An artificial drain field or mound can be built, augmenting thin soils. Or, the biological action of soil can be put in a box of sand or other media. These media filters are then used to pre-treat the wastewater before it is dispersed to the drain field. Another method of pre-treatment is to blow air directly into a wastewater container where suspended organisms are present. The organisms breathe, eat, and multiply. When no more food is available, they die and settle, leaving clarified wastewater. These aerobic treatment units, or ATUs, pre-treat the wastewater before it is dispersed. There are many variations in on-site system design, but all utilize the same natural, biological processes. David Van Hyzen, Texas designer and consultant, has been working with innovative on-site systems for many years.
The whole community doesn't have to be at one point or the other. The whole community doesn't have to be all centralized or all on-site. It doesn't have to all be this level of cluster or this level of cluster. You can have different areas of the community that can be managed in different ways. The idea is that the whole thing is one management system.
If a good drain field cannot be found on everyone's lot, a cluster system may be a practical solution. Each house may have its own septic tank, but they are all connected to a single drain field. Cluster systems can be included with a variety of other on-site treatment methods within one effective community management system. The California Oceanfront Settlement of Stinson Beach has operated a successful on-site management system for over 25 years. The 700 residences and businesses occupy very small lots served by on-site systems. In the 1970s, many septic systems were failing. To avoid the high cost and the population increase that sewers and a central plant might bring, committed residents developed an on-site wastewater plan using innovative alternative systems managed by the Stinson Beach County Water District.
The engineering firm that I worked for before dealt with centralized systems. I thought that one time, that was the only way to go. And I thought that septic systems were basically an old method, until I came here at Stinson Beach. Looking at the way these systems operate and the monitoring system that we have here, I find that, I feel that the cost-effectiveness of these systems more than outweighs the cost of a centralized system.
The conventional and advanced on-site systems here are continually monitored and maintained to assure protection of the sensitive environment.
I think the management program here will work in just about every location. If it's done properly, and it's managed properly, you should not have a problem. These systems could probably last 40 to 50 years without a problem.
Near the American River, in the foothills of the Sierra Nevada Mountains, the planned community of Auburn Lake Trails has been successfully using conventional on-site systems, mounds, and sand filters for 20 years, monitored and managed by the Public Utility District.
The reason our zone works so well is because we've done such extensive work in defining the problems in the soil. And once those limitations have been identified, then we can engineer something that can address the limitations in the soil. But it does require some advanced technology.
We test the effluent straight out of the sand filters themselves. And our district engineer has been very impressed how clean the water is inside these sand filters before they get dosed to the leach lines. It's important that these sand filters do their job. Otherwise, it could send the effluent right down to our creeks and contaminate our creeks. and streams. And we've never had a positive sample in our streams.
When you have a problem with a septic tank, you have maybe a 250 gallon a day problem. When you have a problem with the sewer system, you've got a million gallons a day. And for rural America, dealing with a 250 gallon a day problem makes a lot more sense than trying to deal with a million. I'm very glad I don't have to deal with a million gallons of untreated sewage when there's a problem.
In Edison, Washington, shellfish beds were being polluted by the local tidal slough, which contained effluent from failing septic systems and directly discharged waste. Doris Robbins and her neighbors were determined to find a solution that would not be too economically disruptive.
We had to keep the expense down because this is a fairly low-income community with four generations of people living here. We wanted to keep them here.
To serve the 75 homes and businesses, community volunteers helped build a gravel filter. The local school district, also a major stakeholder, provided the high ground for the drain field and shares in the management of the system.
We were able to cut the costs per site from $20,000 to $7,000. And then for a certain income level, their costs were cut even further to $3,000. The first summer, people commented on how the slough didn't stink anymore.
In the midwestern farm village of Klosner, Minnesota, old septic systems were failing. Soil limitations were overcome by installing new mounds and clusters. The nearby hamlet of St. George had similar problems.
The community was in a violation threat from the county and from the MPCA. And they realized that they had to do something. And at that point in time, they came to the township to try and get some help with the county and try to find answers.
The township planned and enabled a community onsite management system, installing a cluster to serve the 23 homes and the management entity.
As to management, people realize when they invest that kind of money nowadays into a septic system, just like you do a car, just like you do a house, you need to protect it, you need to take care of it. They may not know how to take care of it. And that's why we implement management tools that either help them understand so they can do it themselves, or if they don't choose to, someone will do it for them and therefore they are protected.
In the late 1970s, people in Otter Tail County, Minnesota, noticed a decline in the water quality in their lakes. They decided to replace failing septic systems and start an onsite management system. Roland Mann administers the OMS and ensures the proper functioning of over 1,500 onsite systems in the district.
Your sludge accumulates, your scum accumulates in your tanks, and they definitely need to be checked. And everybody's system is different. One person, one house can have to be pumped every two years, another one might not have to be pumped for every six or seven years. That's what we're finding. And it just all goes back to usage. And the only way to find out is to monitor it, check the tank, see what's in there, see what's coming out of the tank. If you don't, obviously, the longevity of the system is going to be curtailed immensely. Water clarity in the lakes have definitely improved. You could go out and you could see the bottom a lot better than you ever could.
In North Carolina, the area around Elizabeth City has extremely high water tables. Residents there use septic systems managed by the Elbe Maro Regional Health Services Onsite Management Entity. The OMS has been so successful that several adjacent counties have joined it.
Years ago, before we started ME program, we had like a 30% failure rate. Since we started ME program, we had a 1% failure rate. That to me says a whole lot for the management entity program.
Many who work in Washington DC live in nearby Fairfax County. The county health department's onsite management system, perhaps the first in the country, has overseen septic systems for more than half a century. Among the various management procedures, periodic pump-outs by licensed contractors are required. Management reviews ensure that the OMS can adapt to meet changing needs. Today, it serves about 25,000 onsite systems.
Based on the Clean Water Act of 1972, everyone thought that we were going to have sewers. And so a mindset developed that septic tanks are only temporary. We're going to have sewers. Well, now, today, we recognize clearly that we're not going to have sewers. But that mindset hasn't changed. We've been doing work here at UC Davis on intermittent sand filters, textile filters, and the quality that you get is superior to what you produce at a wastewater treatment plant. And so from a treatment standpoint, onsite systems don't have to take a backseat to more conventional facilities.
And because we can focus all of our attention on the treatment process, and we don't have to worry about the collection part of the process, it's really a much more cost-effective option than when you look at a central system, especially for suburban or rural areas.
Communities of people in rural areas really choose to live there, want, are proud of their community, justifiably so, and want to take care of problems themselves. And this is a very, very appropriate way for a community to have a high standard of living with protecting the environment, protect the public health, but still maintain that rural character.
Most of our staff has realized that you can't economically sewer all rural areas. In the areas that we have left that need additional, either for public health reasons or water quality reasons, wastewater treatment, this could be a viable option with the management component so that you achieve the desired treatment results and ensure the long-term viability of the systems.
In our office, the onsite and decentralized program is one of our key initiatives. That's what we're promoting, is to look at the options, consider decentralized systems where you can get the community involved very early in the process, give them the information that they need to demonstrate that these are viable options.
Located in Morgantown, West Virginia, on the campus of West Virginia University, the National Environmental Services Center specializes in providing information and professional expertise in water quality and wastewater issues to interested communities throughout the country.
One of our primary areas of focus at the center is to actually move out and to visit with and to assist communities at the local level. Community leaders, local decision-makers, and residents of communities across America have a good, clear understanding much of the time about many of the issues that concern them. But they don't necessarily know where to draw on the resources, the expertise, or to receive the technical assistance. And so we here at our center send out into the field experts, draw on that resource, provide products and services and other related and ancillary support to enable communities to define and design their own destinies.
A community really only has two choices. If change is inevitable and progress is optional, you can choose to do nothing. If you choose to do nothing, then the destiny of the community is not really in the community's hands. It's in the hands of those people who are creating the change. We have numerous communities around the United States that have been successfully using management entities of some form or another, in some cases for decades. And they have been able to do it successfully. So our job really here is to say, look at what others have done. We'll help you with understanding how others have accomplished this. It's not decision-making at levels where you have to be fearful about what the outcome is. It's sorting through the options to design something that's good for your community.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Complete stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Is it on? Okay. Welcome to the October 5th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
This week's featured dog, available for adoption from the Lorraine County kennel, is a sweet little guy, a very attractive short-haired brindle puggle. He was found wandering on West River Road in Elyria, a male about two to three years old. He just needs a good home. He's available for adoption Saturday, October 8th at 3:00 PM. Why not stop by the kennel and take him for a little walk? Get to meet him.
As you can see, Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams is not here today. His father had passed away on October 4th. His name is Thomas Edward Williams, Sr. And his viewing will be Thursday, October 6th from 2:00 to 4:00 and 7:00 to 9:00 at Dombrowski Rural Funeral Home. And his services will also be at the October 7th for the funeral services. So if you'd like to attend, I'm sure Commissioner Williams would appreciate seeing you there to support him in his father's untimely death. He was a young 71-years-old.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioner's authorized various personnel actions as in the Kennel Summary Sheet for Employees Within Jurisdictions, Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylo. I do have a couple personnel issues, specifically a potential new hire in workforce development. Obviously, the revolving door of new hires at Golden Acres, a matter of union negotiations with United Steelworkers, also an update on our contract with the operating engineers at the Vaskill Bridge that I wish to discuss with the board. Those topics are allowable for executive session talks, so that's the conclusion of our regular board meeting. Today, we go into executive session to talk about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
A purr of way of the reigning and same county commissioners' meeting minutes of September 20, 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Enter into merchant agreement with First Merritt Bank to accept credit cards for the parking lot on Depot Street, Elyria, effective two years, with renewal option for successful two years and contains a 90-day clause. County will charge $3 per day in this parking lot unless other arrangements have been made when renting the Transportation and Community Center and authorize county administrator execute behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordes, can you expand on this?
This is the new parking lot that we installed across from the Transportation and Community Center.
On the site of the old one-stop for the License Bureau?
Yes. Okay. You said one-stop, I'm thinking workforce development.
The one-stop.
Well, we used to have the title office.
Correct.
The old bowling alley.
Okay.
The, right now, we're not, we have automated equipment there that takes credit cards, but we didn't, we don't have an agreement. There were some nuances in the agreement that we had to work through because we're a governmental entity in our ability to allow certain terms and conditions in the contract. So Mr. Ennis was good enough to be working on that. And it's been sitting for a little while. But we do hope to charge for parking in that lot. And as the residue says, other than if we've negotiated for a function that's going to happen at the facility, so we need that flexibility. I don't think this is going to generate a great deal of revenue, but we need to have it in place for the potentiality.
And how is this policed? How are we going to collect?
Well, it's gated.
Is there an arm?
There's an arm.
Okay.
I hope it's not like the Broad Street arm because we have like a, I buy them by the gross because it seems like every week somebody decides to break the arm off. The, but that one's not automated, excuse me, it's not, it doesn't have a credit card automation on Broad Street. This one, we established with state-of-the-art equipment so that they can do swipe when they use the parking facility. So if there's a big function, we can decide what we want to do up there. But as a general rule, I would probably say we're not going to see too much use outside of event parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Receive and journalize proposed vacation of Ross Street, 30 feet wide northerly right-of-way line of Elyria Avenue extending northerly to about 15.2 feet southerly from Easterly Extension southerly right-of-way of Gray Street, being part of original lot 108 in Gaylord subdivision, as recorded in Volume Five, Page 18, Sheffield Township. Publication will be in the Journal October 7th and 14th, viewing will be October 21st at 9:00 AM, and hearing will be on November 2nd at 9:45.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Receive and journalize proposed vacation of South Halloway Street, unimproved, containing .1556 acres, in original lot eight, Carlisle Homes allotment, as recorded in Volume 13, Page 6, Carlisle Township. Publication will be in Chronicle on October 7th and 14th, viewing will be October 21st at 10, and hearing will be November 2nd at 10.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Under Solid Waste, terminate the designation and host community agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Jerry, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, this is just the conclusion of our dealings with EPA as a result of our negotiations with them. We have to terminate our current designation and host a community agreement with Republic. Republic is on board with us on that. And you know, hopefully, we can reinstitute everything, get a new agreement put together through the planning committees. And maybe Keith can fill you in a little bit more about that.
Keith Bailey, Solid Waste. This is going to be a step process, all right? So first, we're going to terminate the existing agreement, then we're going to get our plan, our new draft plan out there which has the fix in it to suit the EPA for public comment and through the ratification process. And once that ratification process is over with, then we will go back and tie up and sign a new community, host community agreement with Republic, all right? But it cannot take effect until the plans, new plans are placed, all right?
Why don't you briefly describe the ratification process for those that have not heard this before?
We have to, first of all, take the plan out for a 30-day written comment period, which will very, very shortly happen, within probably the next seven days. And then there will be a public hearing in November, all right? Which is usually the policy committee meeting. At that point in time, then, the policy committee will determine whether they want to make any changes to plan based on the comments and based on the public hearing. At that point, the committee will vote the plan out for ratification. At that point in time, it must receive 60% approval by population of the political subdivisions in the district. It's a little bit complicated. It's not a majority vote here. It's 60% of the population represented by the political subdivisions. So all 34 political subdivisions, including you, the commissioners, will have a chance to vote on it. And once that... And once that ratification is complete, we have...there's a 90-day window legally that we can do that in. Once that's declared and set, at the end of that 90 days, we bring it back, the Policy Committee reviews the results of ratification, and if we have the 60%, it goes to EPA for final approval.
Now, my understanding is it requires 60%, but it also requires, A, the county and B, the larger city within the community. So even if we achieve the 60%, but we're not able to achieve the county and the city of Lorraine currently...
That is correct.
We will be unsuccessful in that ratification process.
That's correct.
So, you know, we need...we're going to be working on that, but it's not as...it's not as given as one would hope. The last ratification process was a little stormy.
Yeah. Extended an additional year to get it done. It was very difficult last time.
Now, we have new mayors to get up to speed on these.
The new mayors will not be in office when we do this ratification process.
It's going to be done before January?
That is the hope.
Wow.
We have to be all done by June and submitted, correct?
That's correct.
We'll still have the EPA issues to work through.
So you're hoping to be ratified by year-end, right?
Well, we're going to...it's going to be in the New Year, Jim.
Oh, I actually thought it was going to be by year. So maybe the new mayors will be in place. I apologize.
They will be. They will be. And the ratification process, since the EPA is still holding us abey as of yesterday yet on sending this out for public comment, we've...and the calendar point where the timelines in the state law take us in the New Year.
We need to talk about that EPA issue offline later.
Yes, sir.
Because I did read your email, and I understood that we were...we had passed that berry, but maybe we haven't. Okay. Thanks.
Just curious, isn't the city of Lorraine...the city of Lorraine is the largest city?
Correct.
And I was just concerned that they...are they not under contract with Allied at this point? Because I know every quarter, when I get my bill from Allied, it goes up, you know, just a little bit, but I don't understand the increase.
I believe they've been on an extension this year. They extended the prior contract through this year with Allied/Republic, whatever the contracting agency is.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the contents of that contract.
That's a locally negotiated.
Especially if you need to call the mayor and find out why...I mean, it's been just every month...every three, because we get it every three months, but every single time it goes up just a little bit at a time, up, up, up. And I thought we were under contract. Why wouldn't it be the same?
Well, they might have increases built into the contract.
More than likely, you're printing a fuel surcharge. That varies.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Kaylo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Award contract to RET-3 Job Corp Cleveland for the East Scrap Collection Recycling Program for 2012. For proposals received, this being the most responsive compliance investigation since September 8th, the cost is $0.08 per pound and provides 1,000 shipping boxes and pallets at no cost and new changes below district cost by over...and this should be $16,000. I was trying to...
$156.
I know. I don't know where I got that number at. And save value of materials handled in 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
We received four qualified proposals for this, and it's my pride that we actually have reduction in costs again. I told you, this electronics market had changed, and now things have value, but the big dragger on the electronics market has always been the CRT monitors. They have no value. They're a cost to us, and their cost usually outweighs what the profit in electronics is. So we keep moving forward, and this is the first time we've been able to get a cut in price on this particular product, all right?
Thank you, Keith.
Thanks.
Ms. Kaylo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
I don't have any additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report this morning either.
Mr. Sherr's report.
Well, Saturday, the Doggie Do in Oberlin, which I enjoy going to every year to be a judge, got canceled due to the weather. It was rainy and nasty. Normally, it's rain or shine, but it was just a little bit too bad for...we figured the tents and everything would probably blow away. Goodwill's job fair is today. Started at 9:00, and it will be going until 3:00 o'clock. And like I said, they had 19 or 21 employers signed up last week, hopefully even more by today. So there's some job opportunities out there for some people. And their grand opening for their...their official grand opening for their store in Oberlin will be Thursday, the 13th, and that's at 10:00 o'clock. They had a soft opening on Monday, and they did extremely, extremely well. So go out there and see what they have to offer and find the treasure. Like, I always find a treasure when I go to Goodwill. So that's the end of my report.
Okay. Like to thank the Morning Journal Chronicle Telegram. The Board of Commissioners met with their editorial boards last Wednesday and Thursday. Thank you for the ringing endorsements of Issue 22. Was a busy week. Myself, Sheriff Stomitty, Dennis Kavanaugh, and Prosecutor Will were at the Midview Ladies Club this past week, talking about the sales tax. Again, real good response. Spoke to people. We are Ohio Event last night in Avon Lake. The billboards are up around the county. We've got 10 billboards up, yes, on Issue 22 for the criminal justice system, quarter percent temporary tax. We are having a fundraiser, October 16th. The Journal had it online this morning. It is at Stocker Center. It will be from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. I'm sorry, Brad, I didn't check yours online and have time this morning.
It wasn't on there. I looked at mine.
2:00 to 4:00, it'll be $15. There's a cash bar. It's the Terry Kitchen Swing City Big Band featuring Ray Ubers on vocals. It's very popular. We have 2,000 tickets out there with only 1,000 seats, so first come, first served. There are also sponsorships of $200 for the event. We were asking the elected officials and businesses to help participate in that. I'd like to thank Commissioner Kokoski, Fiscal Officer Pat Epple from Sheffield Township, and Treasurer Dan Tollara for being our first sponsors. Also, if you're on Facebook, Issue 22, Keep Our County Safe. We have a Facebook page. It's up and running. Please like us, join us. All the information will be there in just a busy week coming up. So that's the end of my report. And next week, our meeting will be on Tuesday. The Board is moving our meeting, because I have to be in Columbus on Wednesday for meetings with Mark Kwame with Jobs Ohio. So that's the end of my report.
Before we go on to, I just want to congratulate the Ohio Assembly Plant for the $128 million investment that Ford is going to be bringing to the Ford plant, which is such good news for our community, and it goes to show that the workers at that plant have done a tremendous job, and otherwise Ford wouldn't be investing. So congratulations to Ohio Assembly Plant and all the people there.
The meeting on Tuesday will be at noon, so not at 9:30, at noon. And then we will not meet on Wednesday of Board Correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second?
Discussion, Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning? Come on up, Elizabeth.
Speaking of Oberlin, our Oberlin representative.
Elizabeth Rummix Oberlin, you're quite right about the canceling of the Doggie Do. Tappan Square was probably ankle-deep in mud at that point, and so on. I really have just two questions. The next Tuesday meeting at noon, is that a regular Commissioners' meeting?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
We have meetings prior to that in the morning we have to attend, so we made it at noon. Just we had scheduling issues, and everything going on the Board was kind enough to move the meeting so I can meet with Mark Kwame.
I think we did that about six weeks ago.
Yeah. It's been a while. I've had it on my calendar a while.
And my other question is the Wellington meeting on the 19th. Where is it to be held?
The Wellington meeting.
What's meaning? Is there not a meeting of the Commissioners and other officials on October 19th about the sales tax?
I believe that's New Russia Township.
Oh.
We have New Russia Township and Sheffield Township. You got your calendar out, Tony? My phone's gone down.
New Russia Township on the 19th from 7:00 to 9:00, and then there's something in La Grange Township Association on Thursday, the 20th? That's all I got. I don't have anything for Wellington.
Sheffield Township on the 26th, I believe. We'll get you that schedule. Maybe we ought to post that, give that...how to post on our...the events we're speaking at and where we're going to have public meetings, because we're still trying to schedule other communities, so.
Thank you. For some reason, I had...I had heard it as being in Wellington.
No, we just did Penfield, which included a lot of Wellington people.
Which is Wellington, right.
So we're in New Russia, Sheffield Township.
Well, New Russia, of course, is going to be most convenient. Thank you.
And all that information is on the website now, if you guys haven't looked at it.
Okay, it is on our website now.
Put the click button, the one-click button, and you're all there.
www.lorainecounty.us?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the Board this morning? Make a motion to move an executive session as outlined by the County Prosecutor and County Administrator?
Second?
Ms. Kaylo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Hey, buddy. How you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard. I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay? Is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part-human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice to kind of turn your mood around once they come...when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I'm always like, oh, my gosh, Lily's going to play now.
Yeah, because like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail. And then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from...I just really wanted a burger. So we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her. So I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me, because I was just so upset. But we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight. Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble, because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not...he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you. And sometimes, when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay.
I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the Internet, actually. He was...they had his picture on the Internet, and so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog. He's...he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all...they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities.